Row call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Eliana.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Stand with me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're at item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the items come up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the planning commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. At this time, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Does anybody wish to make any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Item three, approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for January 28, 2015.
I'll second.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yeah, yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Sting.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Motion's been carried. Next item is consent calendar. What we're gonna do is we're gonna pull five C temporarily and we'll do that second, Gil, so it can save our opportunity to leave. Oh, I'm sorry, disregard, we're still in four, we're in four A, right? Okay, consent calendar. Action on items in this section would be taken with one, that motion and vote unless anyone wishing to discuss any of these items requests that it be pulled from the consent calendar and held over as such discussion. The consent calendar is an untimed item and may be taken at any time during the course of today's meeting at, as time allowance. Okay, there's only one item for A.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick, just a quick question. This is a subdivision that was viewed, that was looked at back in 2007, is that correct?
Yes.
Here we're at 2015. Have things changed enough that we need to review this? Maybe this needs to be reviewed, or are the conditions of that?
Well, the extensions of time allowed by legislatively have allowed this tentative map to survive to this point, so this extension of time would just be for another, another six months. The, on the SEQA front, and that's why the legislature allows this, is, you know, the question is, is the document getting stale for the SEQA analysis?
Right, that's right.
Basically, and that's why the legislature allows us. Through that time limit, the, is based really on both SEQA and land use, so that we don't run into this issue or run afoul of SEQA. So, no, the document isn't stale enough to review until the legislature basically says it is. So this extension of time is allowed by the legislature. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, but I guess my concern is the document is stale. Is that correct?
Well, that's what I'm saying, the legislature has basically said the limit of what is stale and what is not stale, so they allow this by law to, they're basically saying it's not stale.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's, that does answer my question then.
Okay, so that's been answered. I guess we need, we need a motion, I guess.
Make a motion that we approve the extension of six-month extension of time to July 31, 2015 for subdivision tract number 793.
I'll second that.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go on to item five. And this, these are partial map, public hearing. Actions on all partial maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given at any ti, on any item unless requested. In this case, there will be a separate vote on each of the item. When we get down to five C, Gil's gonna excuse himself, so we'll just go on to everything except five C at this point in time. D?
He's the one that have a problem.
Oh, you have, okay, so, so when we get down to those items, you guys could excuse yourself. All right, let's go with, there's no, let's go with item five A, tentative partial map number PPM 14043. And this is a difficult name to pronounce, Riza Raskei or something like that, James Winton Associates. This is a category exemption and a tentative public map number PPM 14043 to divide 138.37 acre partial into two partial 20.6 acre partial to 18.37 acres in the AE exclusive agriculture zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 70, one mile east of 256 East Harry Bella. I think we decided that we're gonna do all the public hearing, is that correct? The first three, A, B, and C.
A and B. A and B.
A and B, A and B, okay, so, so let's go back to tentative, the partial map, PPM 14043. This is approval category exemption inconsistent with the California Environmental Equality Act and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative map number PPM 14043. Do we have a motion?
Chairman, chairman?
Yes.
All of these maps are held under one public hearing. You're pulling the one for separate consideration. So you need to open the hearing for all, all of these, A, C, D, and E, and then close the public hearing and then take separate action on each item.
Okay, so we're gonna take a separate action on C and D, right? Because we have some people that's gonna be excused. All right, so let me correct, do, do we have any public?
Open the public hearing for all of us, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing for all items, A, B, and E. Did I get that right, Mike? Okay, so let's go with, okay, let's go back to five A. Now we need a, we're gonna close the public hearing, and then we're gonna go back to five A. Five A is category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Act, the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction and conversion of small structure and conditionally approved tentative map number PPM 14043.
I make the motion that we use a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and that we conditionally approve tentative parcel map 14-043.
Second that.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, motion's carrying. Item B, tentative partial map number PPM 14048. This is to approve a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3, and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 14048.
And I'll make the motion that we use the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and that we conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-048.
I second that.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Now, on, on C, I, Gil, I don't, does Gil need to be excused since, since there was no public hearing or any sit and abstain or something?
Excuse me, what was that question?
Well, Gil needed to be excused for tentative parcel map, item C. And...
You haven't opened that one up for a public hearing.
Okay, so...
That was open and closed for public hearing.
Why don't we jump to E?
Okay. Let's, okay, the law has spoken. So let's go to item E. This is approval of a category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Act, SEQA and state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to a limited number of new small facility and structure and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 14043 with requirement of final map.
I'll make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and also conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-045 with the requirement of a final map.
I'll second that.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to C, tentative parcel map, and we're gonna open the public hearing on this item. Gil's gonna excuse himself, but I don't... Anybody wish to make any comments, testimony? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close this, the public hearing. And this is for approval of category exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and SEQA and the state SEQA guideline pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to a limited number of new small facility or structure and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM 14053 with a final map waiver. Do we have a motion or discussion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and that we conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 14-053 with a final map waiver.
I second that motion.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
And Eliana.
Yes.
Okay, now I'll go to item D, and I, you guys wanna excuse yourself?
I will excuse myself, recuse myself, and whatever else I need to do.
Okay, and let's bring Mr. Gil back.
Did note that Bill Whitlatch is accusing himself as well?
Yes.
We got enough people here, yeah, looks like it. Okay, so we're gonna open the public hearing for item D, tentative parcel map number PPM 14-054. Anybody wish to make any testimony or comments in the public? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and anybody on here wish to make comments? Otherwise, I'm open for a motion.
I make the motion we approve the categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and we conditionally approve the tentative parcel map PPM 14-054 with a final map waiver and an exemption, exception, I'm sorry.
An exception. I second that motion.
Row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
The motion has been approved. Oh, okay, Gil's gonna step out on this one also, recuse himself. He's a very popular person in the county.
Can't go.
Okay, while we're getting set up here, this is a continuing public hearing on PD 14-001 PSR, McDonald USA LLC and Max Pacara. There's an addendum to negative declaration and planned development of final site plan to allow the construction and operation of a 3,042 square feet McDonald fast food restaurant with a drive-through component and two outdoor advertising display signs on a 37,000 square feet partial in the PDC-2 Plan Development General Commercial Zone. The site is located on the northwest corner of Avenue 56, Sierra Highway, and Early Mart Avenue, approximately 700 feet east of SR 99 and Avenue 56 on ramp in Early Mart. The contact is gonna be Michael.
That's Mike Washam for the record.
Thank you. Mike Washam, what we have today before you for your consideration is a continuation of a project that it was originally opened on January 28th. So, the development project is for the construction operation of McDonald's restaurant located at the White River Plaza in Early Mart. The public hearing was opened during the January 28th Planning Commission meeting and subsequently continued to today, February 25th, at the request of staff to provide the opportunity to review late correspondence from Caltrans. We've been able to do that, we, in collaboration with TCAG, staff has determined that the need for potential, any warranted future road improvements will be addressed through TCAG, there's $6 million set aside for southern Tulare County interchange improvements along the 99. So this is a long-range type thing, there's nothing been proposed for immediate improvements, but we're looking down the road, so we've, we've set aside that for the future, potential future road improvements. So, at this point, oh, we also just received a letter, I believe, Vellma passed out a support letter from Senator Vidaeck's office we received a couple days ago. So with that, staff respectively recommends approval of the project, recommendation being that you continue the public hearing for anybody here in the audience that wants to make comment, close the public hearing, and then adopt the addendum to the adopted negative declaration and approve the plan development project PD 14001.
So that means essentially then the $6 million comes out of Measure R funds?
Well, no, there, there's already set aside specifically in phase two of the Measure R program, which will be completed, the second, the second tier, I think, begins actually soon, it's set aside for improvements on the 99, southern, southern area of Tulare County on 99 interchange improvements specifically for those. TCAG, every three years, they reanalyze the existing conditions and see what type of improvements are warranted based on travel, based on traffic studies, and so talking with them, this money is already set aside for improvements on those interchanges along 99 in the southern part of the county.
Okay, any other comments up here? Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody wish to address this issue, please come up, give your name and address for the record.
Other slide.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Tulare County Planning Commission, staff and the audience, my name is Max Becerra. I'm a principal of White River Plaza LLC, we're the developers and owners of this property. We thank staff for working with us on this project. We've been working also with McDonald's USA for about three years to, to try to secure their presence as part of a, of a very efficient and attractive commercial center that we'd like to bring to the, to the community of Early Mart. We have representatives from McDonald's here as well, and I think a representative from, from the community of Early Mart. But we are very satisfied with, with staff's conditions of approval, and we would like to, to begin working on this new aspect of, of our project with the approval of, of your planning commission. With that, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a good project, and if everybody's satisfied, we're ready to vote maybe in your favor, or you...
I'm a resident.
Resident, okay, I'll go ahead and say so.
Yes, please, can I give your name and address?
I certainly will. My name is Barbara Mejia, and I live 1074 North Dove Road in Early Mart. I've been a resident for 30 years, and as you know, Early Mart has been dormant for many, many years. We've always hoped that something would develop, and Max finally brought in development. It's amazing to get off onto 56, you see life, you see revenue, you just see so much people coming from the surrounding communities to visit Early Mart, and now to find out that we have McDonald's wanting, McDonald's wanting to come in. I mean, it's just amazing, we have employment now, you have people walking up and down, where before at nine o'clock it was, it was des, I mean, it was just desolate, there was nothing there. So now to see someone has a vision in our, in our community, it's amazing, it really is amazing, and to allow McDonald's to come in, Early Mart residents, we have a life, we have a vision, and we also love McDonald's french fries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to make any testimony? Okay, so we're gonna go, go ahead and cut, close the public hearing at this point in time, and any other discussion? I know Gil's in favor of the project.
I'd like to make a motion.
I think, okay, I think they want to continue it, is this right? Is that...
No, no.
Oh, okay, so I thought you had some late... All right, yeah, I, I had a late night at work, so forgive me. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the negative declaration for final site plan number PSR 11, yeah, 007, PSR 11 007, PD, and approve the plan development, excuse me, PD 14 001, PSR. Woo! Toked me up.
I'll second that motion. For the cops.
Thanks.
Okay, it's been moved to second, row call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Okay, motion has been approved. And you could have your McDonald's burger there.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item B, the mining permit, 6B. Oh, did we forgot Gil?
You know, if it hadn't been for McDonald's, I'd be half the man I am now.
I just hope they've removed the trans fat by now, they promised.
Gong obviously doesn't eat the fries, but...
Okay, let's go on to 6B, the mining permit number PMR 98-003, Semex and Stillwell. This is a continued public hearing, we'll paint Tulare County mining permit number PMR 98-003, Semex and Stillwell, California, mine ID number 94-54-0034, located north of Lamitas Drive and Highway 198, near Lemon Cove, California. Contact is Michael Spata, the director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you is a continued public hearing with regard to the Semex mining permit. In terms of background, you may recall in December, there was an extensive public hearing that was opened, and during which time extensive testimony and evidence was provided. Since that December date, a number of things have happened. Number one, staff has provided written responses to the comments that were made in writing as well as orally, and those comments are in your packet and they have been distributed to the public. In addition, settlement discussions have occurred between counsel for both sides, documents have been exchanged, and after conferring with both attorneys, they would be supportive of the proposed action today, which is to continue the matter, allow further settlement discussions for the purpose of trying to resolve matter. There is no time certain in there, I would suggest 30 days, however, the attorneys can speak to how much time they think they need, but 30 days would be, would be staff's suggestion. So again, what I would suggest is that take testimony today with regard to the matter that is before you, which is the continuance from the attorneys, and if any other interested party wants to make a comment, I would certainly respectfully request that they be allowed the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Okay, any questions up here?
On the meeting that I missed, I did read and listen to the testimony, so, which was considerable, so...
Yeah, I, I too missed that original meeting, however, I did read the testimony, or the, and I think I read all, what, 200 some odd pages of it?
I would hope we would only hear new stuff today.
Right. Okay, so no other comments here, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public testimony. Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please. Any comments at this point in time, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, my name's Patrick Mitchell from Mitchell Chadwick. I'm here on behalf of Semex today. I was here at the last hearing in December, the ones, Commissioners who were here may recall that. We agree with staff's recommendation, we are in discussions trying to resolve the matter with the attorney for the neighbors, Ray Carlson, so we are trying to attempt to resolve issues. We've made significant progress in that regard since the last hearing in December. We received the neighbor's proposal about, slightly more than a week ago, and we responded yesterday, but it'll take, I think, Director Spata's 30 days is probably about right, maybe 60. We could do it within 30 days, but I'd leave it to Mr. Carlson, the neighbor's attorney, on how quick they can respond. I did wanna mention a few things on the record, and I don't wanna get sidetracked onto these issues, I'm just doing this for the record. What I said already is where we're really headed with this and want this to head, but there were a few things in the staff report that we wanted to respond to for purposes of the record in the Van Adenicate result. And I'll go through those really quickly. First, Tulian Young did a supplemental memo dated February 17, 2015, we received it a few days ago, and if this were to continue beyond the next hearing, we'd request more time to respond to that in more detail, but for the record, we just wanted to note that we disagree with the characterization on page three of that supplemental report regarding drought not having an effect here, and we went through that in detail in our last presentation, that hasn't really changed. We're just reiterating that based on a supplemental memo that came out since our last hearing, just came out about eight days ago. We also, the next point is we disagree with the analysis on the V ditch pump. Just because a V ditch pumps up water in the area, in our opinion, does not mean that if there was no mine there and no V ditch there, that there'd be water in these wells. In other words, if there's drought-related low groundwater, the fact that there's no water in the wells isn't necessarily related to the mine, or to put it another way, if there was no mine there at all, and you have the severe drought, wells are going to go have production problems like there are all over the state. Few things we can agree on with this supplemental report, we just wanted to point out, when we were here last time, there was some concern by Mr. Young with metering the water into the V ditch, we had stated that it had already been done. Since then, he, Greg Young and our consultant, Andy Companion, have been to the site together in late January, and you'll see in his supplemental report, he confirmed the meter was installed and operating, as we stated it was last time, he hadn't been there to confirm that, he, he has since. So, the other thing is the monitoring wells location, you may recall there was some disagreement, or I'd say more, not disagreement, but confusion on where they were. That was also removed, you'll note in the Mr. Young supplemental report on page nine, he confirmed that the monitoring wells are located in the, in the position where our consultant, Andy Companion, stated they were located, so he was able to confirm that on the site visit as, as well. Regarding the updated recommendations, we just wanna go on record stating that we do not agree with updated recommendations in Mr. Young's report. Items number six and seven, we think, review of the rec... Uh, items number six and seven, we think, uh, review of the reclamation plan is not necessary at that ti- at this time, there's an evolution of this process. Once we get done mining, we'll reclaim. That'll be years from now. There's no evidence at all, I don't think, anywhere that the reclamation plan won't work, so to look at it and analyze whether it needs amended, we think's premature. I believe RMA staff's in agreement with our position on that. Um, and then on point seven, regarding, uh, changing the, uh, existing condition on what you compare well levels to, it was previously compared to pre-mining baseline EIR data, it would be our, uh, position that shouldn't change because the comparison should be what was going out there before mining. The dates proposed in the change actually would be post-mining dates or inclusive of post-mining dates. We don't think that's the correct baseline to be comparing to, although the, uh, request on pages nine and ten of the Tulley Young supplemental reports is not entirely clear to us, so maybe the intent's, uh, different than we read it as, and maybe we're on the same page and just don't understand that clearly. And we'll try to talk to, uh, county RMA staff and Mr. Young about that. Then finally, I just wanna note, our, our last point, uh, in the RMA response to comments memo from Mr. Spata dated February nineteenth, twenty fifteen, he listed three additional proposed conditions to the same ones, uh, Mr. Spata proposed at the December meeting. I had come up at that meeting and it's in the record that we were generally in agreement with all three of those conditions. We wanted a few minor changes to new condition one and new condition three. Um, our request for those minor changes hasn't changed. I actually think we're on the same page with Mr. Spata on our requested changes, but I don't think they're reflected in the restated, uh, conditions for this hearing, and I just wanted to go on record saying we're still requesting those changes, which are already in the record, and we can, uh, work with RMA staff to make sure that's done, or, or that we get on the same page before we come back here. But, uh, again, we're, uh, supporting staff recommendation for continuance. We think we can get this resolved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, please come forward. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ray Carlson, one, 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 East Seventh, Hanford, nine, three, two, three, oh. I'm an attorney representing the landowners who have the wells in question, and I'm gonna just be very brief, we have engaged in settlement discussions. I think we've made progress. I think we can make more progress and bring this matter to a conclusion, and therefore I request that this, uh, item be continued for thirty days and, uh, echo the request for the continuance of the other, of, uh, Mr. Spata and, uh, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other testimony? State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning. My name is Rob Morton. I reside at three, three, five, one, one, Sierra Drive, Lemon Cove, California. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
I would like to respond to a few comments that, that the attorney for Semex made, and that was, um, is, is the state and Tulare County still considered to be in a drought condition? Is that correct? My question is...
I think we can make an official statement on that.
Yeah. Well, I think everybody assumed that's correct.
There is an outstanding resolution from the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Publicly noticed.
My comment is, as it has been previously, is that when they stopped pumping water into recharge tracts in September of oh thirteen, within three months, our wells were going dry, and they were dry all summer long, until approximately a month after they commenced pumping water into the recharge tracts in September of oh fourteen. That whole summer, our wells were dry. But it's very interesting to me that they blame it on the drought. Why is it that our wells are dry and a hundred, a hundred and fifty yards west of us, their mining permit, their mining pit, I'm sorry, approximately thirty acres in diameter, fifty feet deep approximately, was full of water all summer long? Why is that? Very interesting to me. Doesn't make sense. Our main concern, myself and my neighbor's main concern, is that when they're gone, when Semex is gone, what guarantee do we have that our wells are still gonna maintain the water level that they had before they came? Yes, there is a plan, a reclamation plan, and it looks good on paper, and they say it's supposed to work, but will it work? What's our guarantee that it will work? When they're gone, if it does not work and our wells go dry, what do we do then? Are we gonna have to go through this law process? All these meetings, wasted taxpayers' money, and our time? All of my neighbors had to work. I fortunately was not, I didn't have to work this morning. My, my boss was able to work the schedule, I try work tonight, but anyway, that's our main concern, and we are optimistic that, that a settlement can occur, and we can be, um, the money that we've lost can be compensated to us again. We are, we are hopeful of that, and, um, um, the progress is being made. Anyway, those, those were the three main issues that, uh, that I was concerned with this morning, as well as my neighbor's. So, I appreciate your time this morning.
Sir, could I ask you, your estimation, what kinda financial loss are you talking about?
Um, as I've given the information to my attorney, and they have submitted it to the Semex attorney, my personal loss is just under seven grand.
Okay.
And I have, I have spoken, also with that, I have spoken with, with several realtors, and I have been informed that when, when a, when a property loses a reliable water source and view, if you come to my property, you'll see a berm, a fifteen-foot berm, all the way along the western boundary of my property and all of my neighbor's property, and it's full of weeds, fifteen feet high. View is completely gone. They say with those two things, missing those two things, a property will lose half its value. That's what I've been told. That's not me speaking. That's real estate property. So if that's the case, my property was appraised at a hundred and twenty grand, so that's approximately a sixty thousand dollar loss if I would choose to sell. So, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other person wishes to make any public comment or testimony at this time? Did you wanna make comments? Yes, please come, come on up, give your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Julie Bigum. I live at two, zero, four, eight, eight, Avenue three twenty-two in Wood Lake. Uh, the folks that have worked that aren't here this time, but were here last time, are my neighbors, and they're my friends. And, uh, I wasn't able to speak last time, but I'm saddened that the planning commission is pushing for a settlement so hard, 'cause all this brings back deja vu, I've been around the block a few times regarding settlements. But I have to ask that what conclusions can be made at this point, since there are no end games set in motion? I don't know how these people can settle with no end games in, in place. For example, what happens if or when the water is turned off again? Or will the mine be deemed idle? Or will, will their permit be revoked? These are things that are in the alternative, and nobody's talking about the alternatives just for these folks to settle. Modifications to this project can be easily done when the neighbors have settled. They won't have, uh, as much of a say-so. But however, what I'd like to bring up, and I think it was Rob Morton brought it up, about the property values. If water is shut off to their properties, their properties will be virtually worthless. The property itself would probably have some value, but I don't even know if they can sell the house on the property without running water. And the last thing that I'd like to say is that once a settlement is reached, I do believe that if they wish to sell their house, they have to disclose it. And they would have to disclose all of their woes and, and trials and tribulations regarding this particular thing. So I just think that it's, uh, it's very sad that you guys are pushing, and I hope that they stand back and take more time, because I think there's a lot of other issues that need to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other person wish to make any comments? Okay, seeing that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public...
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, for the record, I don't believe the planning commission per se is pushing for anything. We're hearing what our peers, the public, wishes to have us act upon. So I, I take exception to the last comment. Uh, we're not pushing for anything. We're hearing what is the best interests of our peer group, the public. That's all I have to say. I agree with Mr. Millies.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, all right, you've heard the testimony, you've heard staff's recommendation. I believe that, uh, I would request that, um, this matter be continued to a date certain, at least thirty days, and if the clerk could tell us what that day would be and then announce it, uh, that would be appreciated. May I also say, based upon some of the testimony, uh, I will put this in writing, but I would like to request that all groundwater monitoring data and all well logger data be provided to RMA so that, uh, if this matter does go forward, we have a complete picture with regard to that data. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment, uh, may, maybe we should just give them a little more time, because what difference will a couple of weeks make? So maybe forty-five days?
Thoughts, or, 'cause, uh, you could probably still continue it, right? Am I correct if...
That is correct. I'd like to keep the, keep the feet to the fire, if you don't mind.
I'm, I'm okay, I just, you know, if they can't get it together in thirty days, then...
Well, then they can extend it, yeah. I'm not, I'm not opposed to continuing it.
I, I think both attorneys agree that they could get it done in thirty days, so...
Okay.
Which would be March twenty-fifth.
Be, be March twenty-fifth is... Okay. You want, notary comments?
Unless you wanted to go to eight, April eighth, giving them the actual thirty days. April eighth?
April eighth is the thirty days. Okay.
That's better.
So let's, let's just, uh...
Yeah, that would be better, 'cause I won't be able to attend the March twenty-fifth.
I will likely not be here April eighth. For obvious reasons.
Okay, so thirty days is April eighth, so, uh, it's up to you, whatever the motion you guys wanna make.
Public hearing remains open, then?
Uh, public hearing will remain...
That is correct.
Yes.
Continue the public hearing and, uh, continue it to a date certain, which is April eighth, I believe. That would, that would be the motion. Frankly submitted.
Okay, I'll, I'll make that motion, as long as that's clarified now. April eighth, time certain.
Okay, any second...
For a continuance.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, it's been moved to the second to continue to, uh, April eighth.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Chairman, um, on the negotiations or the, you know, between the attorneys and the landowners, is that open for anyone to attend those discussions?
These are settlement negotiations pursuant to the Evidence Code, and RMA is facilitating that in the, in the interest of trying to get it resolved quickly. It should be among the attorneys at this time, but then what, what, uh, is resolved will certainly be announced out at the appropriate time. But we're trying to get this done.
Thank you.
Are there gonna be, uh, summarizations, Mr. Spata, regarding, uh, what both sides, uh, would like? You know, settlement issues? Is it something that the, the, the commission should know about at this point or not? In other words, you know, my side says this and this as a settlement, and my side says this and this and this, so that we kinda know where the compromise issues are here? Uh, or is that none of our business at this point?
It's an interesting question, and it's a good question. That is a topic that will be certainly discussed as part of the settlement, whether the details will be released or not. Certainly, the fact that a settlement has occurred, and if there are any changes to conditions, that would be a matter of public record. But in terms of the monetary compensation and so forth, that could be subject to confidentiality as agreed to by the parties.
Sure.
So we'll have to just stay tuned with regard to that. But certainly, the fact that it has been settled and the fact that, uh, there may be requests for changes to the conditions, that will be a matter of public record and discussed in the open forum at the public hearing.
There's a lot of correspondence that I've read through, and there's words like outraged and indignant, and a lot of accusations about the RMA's lack of response and action and so forth, so I think we oughta put that behind us. I hope we're looking at solutions now and not pointing fingers at each other in terms of what outrageous comments and statements were made by both sides.
I agree, and if I may say that...
In the spirit of solution.
That was then, and this is now, and RMA has tried during the past several months to, um, sort of have things simmer down so that we can get to resolving the issues with regard to the permit, as well as any possible monetary compensation. But I think we're there now.
Okay, good.
Yo de chama?
We had a motion in the second on the table.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so we do have a motion to continue to April eighth, and it has been second, so, uh, roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, the motion's been carried, we continue to, uh...
I'd like to just make a quick comment in case, uh, members of the public don't understand. Uh, you know, we're sort of like a court, and people have due process by constitutional right to be heard what they say. And so that means we even allow lawyers to speak, but, and citizens. And so we listen, and we're supposed to be, uh, fair and judge people based on the facts. And so this is due process. This is a constitutional right that we all have. And so we're not pushing for any, any, uh, particular, uh, venue, uh, we just want to help resolve it. And so if we can be resolved without us telling you, government telling you how you should live, then that's my preference. But, uh, remember, we're concerned about your right to be heard, and we try to make decisions based in a fair way, based on the evidence. So thank you.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Just the nod from the board is correct. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item, and that's gonna be the director report. So give a chance for those who don't wanna listen to our directors.
All right, thank you. I, I'd like to say, as, as, uh, continuing with, uh, Commissioner Whitlatch's, uh, resolving things and resolution is in the air, yesterday, the Board of Supervisors settled the litigation with, uh, over the general plan update, so our, um, our general plan update is, is good now. Uh, there'll be a press release, uh, release later today, I believe, regarding that. In addition, yesterday, the Board of Supervisors, um, adopted the, uh, Porterville Area Community Plan, so...
Okay, give it a second for the room to clear.
Uh, could I ask a question on what the settlement was on the general plan update? I mean, just briefly, what the settlement was?
Um, yeah, the settlement, um, uh, there's a, there's a number of, uh, steps that the, the, the county will be taking and some ordinances and some changes, uh, and, and those will be detailed. We'll, we'll release and we'll give you all the commissioners' copies of the settlement agreement. Uh, there's about five or six ordinances that... Uh, there's about five or six ordinances that the, the county has agreed to adopt over the course of the next year, a year and a half, as we implement the general plan.
Gotcha.
Okay, so we're still on item seven A. Any other updates?
Yeah, I have something rather briefly. I, I mentioned at the last planning commission that we had successfully recruited a person, planner four for my division. She joined us on Monday. Her first full workday was yesterday. Her name is Jessica Willis. She's a planner four. She was with the Valley Air District, my roots, for ten years. So she joined us yesterday. She, very knowledgeable in secret-related issues for air quality. She's gonna assist us there. She's also very knowledgeable in greenhouse gases and everything that goes on with the air district and permitting. As a matter of fact, she's working on a permit right now for us in an area of her expertise, that indirect source review rules, that she's doing that. Uh, last Thursday, I was a part of a panelist for the, for the twenty thousand, twenty fifteen AEP Association Environmental Professional SEQA, uh, update for advanced SEQA. So I sat on that panel. And I had my other two staff were there, were also there. And that's basically it. We're just punching away at a bunch of EIRs and keeping very, very busy.
I have a question for Hector. I got a call from Quea Delta Hospital asking me if I knew of any reports that compared cities and air quality. And, you know, there are a lot of charts out there that compare one city to another. In their case, they're trying to recruit doctors. And so Tulare County gets a bad rap for very bad air. And so what they're looking for is Bakersfield, Tulare, Fresno, Chico, Redding.
All of that is readily available. Have them give me a call or just?
I'm making the call for you.
Okay, fine, come, come by.
Well, you can just email me something. It just needs to be simple. But air quality, people misunderstand. It may say one thing, but, you know, is it particles of what, you know?
Right, right. Uh, the Valley Air District actually has a really good link to it. So I'll send you all these links. So you can look at that stuff. It's real navigable. It's, it's real intuitive and it's real simple, and even I can use it. You know, so it's, it's, it's really, it's real beneficial. It has all the air districts there. And it also has monitors for not only, like, say, the air district, but it has for California Air Resources Board monitors. So there's a downtown Visalia monitor, so they can get that immediate data. But yeah, that's readily available. I'll get you something.
Okay, thank you. Doctors are very analytical, and so the simple charts don't work.
Oh, they, they got complex data too if he wants that.
Yeah.
Commissioners, Aaron Bach, chief planner. The Planning and Processing Division moves forward on many fronts. Uh, we've been conducting various workshops throughout a lot of communities over the last few weeks. It's beginning our second round of Complete Streets. And we also continue to move forward on our community plans. Uh, and to our list, we've added a few these, these years. So very, very busy with those. As Mike stated, Porterville was approved yesterday. And as, as far as our list, that's our second one. And we're hoping to get five more this upcoming year. We're also continuing to process things very well and very smoothly. And including use permits and rezones. So it'll be, it'll be an interesting year for this commission and for the board as we move these projects forward. And we look forward to working with you. And we'll definitely give you the heads up before we, we load you up with three community plans at any one given meeting. Thank you.
Confession time.
A question. Aaron, didn't you tell us that after the first of the year, you were meeting with, there was a Caltrans meeting or, of the updates of what Cal? Did I dream that? Did I?
Well, we've had several meetings with Caltrans as far as the, uh, project list, something of that, that nature. Well, we continue to work with our AT, grants, with the ATP grants, which includes Safe routes to school. And we do have, we did submit those for funding. And we did receive a grant. We didn't actually get a grant for any one of those projects, but received a hundred thousand dollars for the planning of those. So then we put this information together, and we go after the next round of funding. So there's two conversations with Caltrans. There are, there are definitely funds available. And there is interest on Caltrans' part in assisting in funding those.
Like a partnership?
Right, the, the second, the second phase of the ATP grants will be, we submitted seventeen applications last year. We'll be submitting a number again this year. And I believe the submission date is in May. So those will be coming up pretty soon. We're, we're starting, we're having seminars with Caltrans for packaging a good application. And, and so there will be a number of grants going forward again shortly for ATP-type projects.
Confession, confession time. I went to a free lunch. You know, any times a free lunch, I show up. And Mike Spada was there at the, at the biogas, I guess, digester in, is it Early Mart? Pixley, excuse me, Pixley, directly across the street from the cheese plant, who had a lot of objections. Uh, I thought it was interesting in that the tents for this nice meal were set right up next to the biodigester. It's a totally closed system. And the manure comes from some distance away, is pumped into the tank. They make a hundred CFM per minute, I believe, of methane gas, which they run boilers with. And it's, I mean, I've never seen, seen anything so clean. And the waste product is stuff they use for bedding. And I went up and actually reluctantly put my hand into it. And it's pathogen-free, and they use it for bedding. And there's a second plant, plant for Tulare County. And this, this is, you know, if people complain about methane, this captures it all. Closed system. You do not smell anything, nothing. I mean, we ate next to it, so.
Didn't get any aerosol on your food?
No, I didn't need aerosol. I did wear a gas mask. And then, Michael, you were there. It was wonderful.
Well, there, 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 that is a, a cutting technology, leading edge at the Pixley Biogas. There are a number of potential projects. Tulare County being the, the dairy capital of the, of the country. There are a number of proposed projects going forward, looking for funding, looking for grant opportunities. So we're, we're, we're anticipating that over the next two or three years, the singular, we, we have two or three digesters now operating. Hopefully, we'll have that to five or six in a couple of years, and maybe a dozen or more, you know, shortly after that. It's a technology that's growing and expanding, and it fits right into that greenhouse gas reduction element. So everything is aligning right now for, for di- digesters.
I can't remember what that lady's name was from the state of California. But basically, the state of California has given it the five-star approval. And, uh, anyway, it's, the question I had is, is that when we have projects like that, there is something to do with air quality, water board. You know, these plants are capable of producing way more. But, you know, if every dairy has to build one in conjunction with another plant, it might be economically not possible. But why can't multiple dairies pump into the same system?
That, that's what we're looking for. The, the idea is, there are standalones for certain dairies, large dairies. But the ideal would be to do where dairies are clustered to be able to have one digester that, that feeds all.
But there are laws by the state that kind of keep them from doing that. Is that correct?
I, I do not know. I have to.
I think that's the direction we're going because we're, we're starting to understand the relationship of methane to greenhouse gas and also, you know, vehicle traffic and that kind of emission. And methane is two or three times more toxic than anything that comes out of a vehicle now because of all the emission standards. So this digester thing is the key to the future. And it won't be Tulare County requiring it first, but it's coming. And that's what it's gonna be.
It'll be driven by the economy, but it's, it's incredible.
Well, greenhouse gases will drive it too, I can guarantee.
I would like to make, uh, piggyback on that comment. I think we can definitely thank Tulare County RMA for this project going through and for the negotiations because that plant was redesigned after it came to us. And it was not completely closed when it first came to us. And it's because of the negotiations and what took place here that it got passed through. So I thank you, being a neighbor of that plant. Great, it's a, it's a great example of what can be done.
I don't like to produce this methane, but they're actually this, uh, waste product. They equate it to something like peat moss. And there's potential to bag it and sell it. And it's, it's pathogen-free. I mean, it's absolutely amazing.
Orderless too.
What'd they serve for lunch that day?
Mexican food, and it was really good. I'm sorry you missed it. We got free hats. I didn't take any because that's, you can't do that as a plant.
I was gonna say, did you claim that?
Well, you can take over, up to two hundred and fifty dollars, Bill.
I wouldn't do that.
That's a lot of hats.
But I ate about eight hundred dollars worth of food, so.
Just as an FYI, since we're talking about green renewable energy and stuff, the solar company that, you know, although I work with is taking on a new, a new pro, a new program or that the state has kind of mandated, forcing down the power company's throats. And it's to provide one megawatt solar facilities for communities that are considered underserved. And the whole, every community here in our county, and it pretty much falls under that. So that, what, what's nice about it, and of course, the power companies don't like it, is that they're required to offer power purchase agreements that are lucrative enough to bring the solar companies in to do these projects.
We have one in Three Overs.
About five acres.
Five, five or six.
We're, we're familiar with that program. I, I believe a hundred megawatts was set aside statewide. It was based on the number of customers per utility, public utility. I believe PG and E has sixty-five megawatts set aside. So that'd be sixty-five one-megawatt projects. Edison has thirty-five, or thirty, and, uh, Southern Cal, or, uh, San Diego has five. So, yeah, we're, we're familiar, we're actually looking and talking with some developers about potentially putting on some county sites, county-owned property.
That's a good program.
Well, speaking of underserved too, that's the, a good way to describe our internet situation in Three Overs. And our school is actually doing something about it. They just got several million-dollar grant from the state. And they're going to become a Wi-Fi hub for the whole town. And what this'll do is give us a gig a bit, a gig, something, a lot. And more than we could ever dream of having now. And we will, in maybe ten, twelve, fifteen years down the line, we'll become a little mini hub out of this. And we'll attract techies from Intel and all the, the major companies that don't want to live in the city anymore. And they'll, they'll be able to relocate to Three Overs and, you know, work. I mean, literally, with that kind of speed, you can work anywhere, so.
An industrial plant there.
Well, we're gonna have something really interesting because it's a great place to live by a national park, and it's gonna become a new industry in Tulare County.
But the FCC is gonna take over the internet shortly, so that'll slow it down.
We'll see about that.
Hey, let's move seven, we're still at seven A, the, the rec report.
That was it.
That was it, okay. So we're gonna move on to item eight. Planning Commission discussion item, a request for future agenda, any items? Anybody want to bring up?
Yeah, a Farm Bureau representative here today. It's nice to see her, so.
Want to make her talk?
Okay, I got your points, Bill.
Okay, let's go on to the last item, adjournment of the meeting. So we adjourn to March eleventh, twenty fifteen.